I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Reno County Commission to order, please. Our first item in business is the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Would you please stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. For those listening at home on the Internet to our meeting, Commissioner Bush is with us via audio. He is at his home now. As most of us know, Bob has been going under some medical treatments, and the doctor is not letting him be out among the rest of us. So you'll hear Commissioner Bush on the audio only. I'm not sure that I have any other announcements today, so we'll move right into our Health Department Director's report, Nick Baldetti. Nick, welcome, as always.
Warranted, Commissioners. Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department Director, appointed Health Officer of Reno County. In terms of the sit rep this morning, the United States has 5,95,163 cases of COVID-19, with 163,473 fatalities associated with COVID-19. The state of Kansas updated their numbers yesterday, and in aggregate, since the end of February, state of Kansas had 31,730 cases. 1,911 of those have required hospitalization, with 387 fatalities statewide. For Reno County, as of this morning, we've tested 4,911 constituents with 4,627 negatives. Since March, we've registered 284 positives. We've recovered 230, and we currently sit at 53 active cases. We have had, oh, I'm sorry, our positive testing rate since March is 5.78%, and we've tested 7.81% of the population. We have had one fatality associated with COVID-19, and we currently have three active clusters, active outbreaks, in Reno County. One is associated with a meatpacking facility here in Reno County. Another is a long-term assisted living care facility in the southern part of the county. And then the state correctional facility, the state-run Hutchinson Community Correctional Facility, excuse me, has a current outbreak. A few other trending metrics. Our prior week, positive testing rate, as of today, or as of this morning, I should say, is at 6.72%. Our seven-day rolling average positive test rate, as of August 5th, is at 10.30%. Our positive testing rate, although I stood before you last week, and we saw a decline in the activities over the weekend, unfortunately, we got a dump of near 30 new cases over the weekend, from Friday through Sunday, which significantly impacted our trend line data. So it's not a steep incline, so to speak, but it is a gradual increasing incline, in terms of our positive rate and what we're seeing. Again, we continue to see just the activity in testing coming forth in our community, as well as the positive numbers. Again, if you remember, disease investigation and contact tracing is still underway, but now was about the time that I suggested that we might see some activity in terms of all the events that we were holding, the larger events. That isn't to say that anything's been associated with them yet, because we are still doing the investigation. But as we continue to make those case contacts and visit with those positives, and where they've been and who they've associated with, that'll come to fruition. I'll pause right there, and actually, Dr. Scott Polly from Hutchinson Clinic called me right before I walked in, and stated that he did have some information that he wanted to present for the board as well. So I'll actually, if the board is all right with that, I will just infuse his information with my update, and then I would stand for any questions and/or allow Adam to come up for his update. So if that's amenable, I'll have Dr.
Polly, please.
I'm going to hand out two charts that are kind of going to summarize some of our recent information. This would largely match what I presented, I think, two or three weeks ago. I'd like to thank Nick, and then also the council members for thanking me, or I'd like to thank them for allowing me to step up here, especially last minute. The numbers I'm going to present are what we're seeing in our respiratory clinic at the Hutchinson Clinic, which are, again, reflective of not only the county, but the watershed area that we serve medically here. So these won't be solely patients from our county, but patients who would trickle here to our clinic or the hospital, you know, for the various causes that can happen medically, including COVID for illness. We saw a drop in our percent positives for a week, for a two-week period, after a high of near 15% positive test rate. And again, these are symptomatic patients who present. In the initial part of the previous seven-day period, from the third to the seventh, my hope was we'd be seeing a 7% to 10% positive rate. Like Nick had mentioned, our optics are one that, at the end of the week, we saw a jump in numbers. So if you look on our chart there, the upper chart, the blue at the bottom would be our positive tests for the week. The blue plus the red would be our total tests for the week. You can kind of see the trend in that blue line, in those blue bars. In the chart below it, we have three different values that are charted. The green and the blue, respectively, are on the rightmost Y-axis. The red, which is the number of tests per week, are on the leftmost Y-axis. As you can see in that blue, our positive tests for the week jumped greatly, up to near 30, and that's for an incomplete week, for the third to the seventh. And thus far, our positive testing rate has jumped to above 14%. I say incomplete because our data from Saturday and Sunday isn't back. We're reliant on, at this point, a one, two, three-day lag. So without even those weekend numbers, we're seeing the numbers kind of go back up. Medically speaking, we can handle a community testing rate in that 12%, 14%, 15% range. If it jumps up above that, I'm not sure where we start hitting the ceiling, as far as when we become medical providers, the facilities become the rate-limiting step to providing care. I bring this up because these recent increases I attribute to, one, the clusters that Nick mentioned, but also, on a smaller scale, which you could see as a cluster to family units. We are seeing cases within families of two, three, four people, people that share households with the same name. When we open schools, we are essentially opening another meatpacking industry, per se, another, fill-in-the-blank, a large gathering, which would be kind of fodder for a fire, per se, a place where we could have a very large cluster, all of a sudden. These increasing numbers, or even a plateau in numbers, for me, solidify the fact that masks are important. And when I talk about masks, and I talk about social distancing, in a way, what I'm talking about is people avoiding being a direct exposure to a positive. When we talk about direct exposures, we're thinking about a person who was in close contact for a duration of time without protective equipment to a positive individual, and those are the individuals we try to notify quickly that they were exposed to somebody. They're the ones that we want to say, hey, we don't even know if you're positive, but you were exposed. Can you stop this exposure chain of events by isolating yourself from others, just in case you are infected? We can kind of ride the brake, per se. If we get a case in a nursing home, a business, or the schools, it makes contact tracing extremely hard. And rather than riding the brake, it's almost like stepping on the gas, unless those individuals around the positive person can become less of a, quote-unquote, "direct exposure." The reason why I bring it up is I am aware it's on the agenda, maybe loosen mask requirements in schools. Looking at these numbers, I'm thinking the opposite is needed. Rather than, I think schools ideally will be opened, or our economy will be reopened, but if that means people are more at risk of being a, quote-unquote, "direct exposure", I'm thinking, let's do what we can to eliminate the level of direct exposure they are. And in that case, masks, rapid contact tracing, and hopefully, in the near future, a more rapid test. A more rapid test, a result that comes back sooner, allows us to not only diagnose that person, but more importantly, call all of their contacts on the spot. At this point, we're on that 24-hour, 40-hour delay between testing and diagnosis, which means all their contacts are out, attending meetings like this, attending history class, math class, a teacher's meeting. So until we have that rapid test back, masks, social distancing, I think, are our only weapons. Sorry for, again, last minute getting on the meeting, but I hope this information will be interesting and valuable to everybody.
Okay. Dr. Polly, thank you for being here. Couple of questions about your thoughts this morning. You mentioned rapid testing. Is there any, is that on the horizon? Is that coming soon?
It is on the horizon. Currently, the hospital has some tests from the state, and I underline some. So until you know the supply, you can't really decide what you're going to do regarding the demand. And I can say, at the clinic, on the very near horizon, we're looking at getting a substantial volume of rapid tests, which, when I speak of rapid tests, it does bring up a much longer conversation about things like sensitivity and specificity, which aren't appropriate for the setting. The hope with a rapid test would be to intervene, to do what we're doing, but intervene more quickly. I compare it to a house fire. I'd rather find that house fire when it's in my trash can, as opposed to a half hour later, when it's crawling up the walls and on the ceiling. We're just dealing with a fire, but it's a different scenario, depending on when you arrive to the scene. A rapid test allows us to arrive at the scene more quickly, do the contact tracing, pull a student out of school, pull a employee out of their place of employment to avoid As the clinic, we're currently in conversations about which populations to prioritize. At this time, likely the sick, we're having a lot of people with symptoms. If you're testing those who likely have the infection, you're increasing your odds of catching positives, because there's more positives. But we're hoping, just like we're hoping for an immunization, meaning I don't have anything to really give you evidence that it's on the direct horizon, but we're hoping, in the course of months or years, that on a national level or state level, we might have something that's so rapid and so affordable, and to which we have such a great supply, that testing asymptomatic individuals repetitively would be a possibility. That's a goal across the country, to be able to catch somebody so early, that they don't even know they're sick. We're not there yet, but I do think the current trajectory is moving from this delayed-type test to clinics and hospitals having a more rapid test, and then hopefully, the next step would be a readily-available, rapid, affordable, possibly self-administered test. So we're somewhere along that spectrum, or not to the point we can rely on that yet, and kind of give up on our current masking, isolation, good practice recommendations.
Okay. Doctor, one more question. I noticed the last few weeks that we've had more people in the hospital.
Correct.
They don't seem to be in ventilation, but we have more people there. Could you or Nick speak to why we have more people in the hospital? Is it because we have 51 cases versus 20? Is that an exact extrapolation?
I can speak to some of that secondhand. This would be, you know, via conversations with our intensive, other providers. We have seen kind of an increase, but relatively stable, number of COVID-positive patients and/or patients under investigation in the hospital, but we're also seeing all the other multitude of illnesses and injuries that happen this time of year. There might be more caveats to that, that some of the hospital representatives might be able to discuss, meaning, you know, as we open up surgeries, as we open up more functionalities of the hospital, you by nature will have more volume. It does bring up another thought, though, on, right now, I'm not seeing any other circulating viruses in the community. What I'm seeing is a static number of ill individuals who present, so that would be our N, our total number presenting, you know, daily to weekly is pretty consistent, and a growing percentage of those, or a fluctuating percentage, who are COVID-positive. In the coming months, our number of patients presenting will go up. That could be to COVID and/or flu, name all the other illnesses that circulate, once school starts, all of our fall illnesses, our winter illnesses, whether it's what people commonly refer to as state fair allergies, meaning all the weeds that are out and about this time of year, or those illnesses that circulate. So it's going to really muddy the waters, as far as what people present with, but it'll also increase the total numbers. That's wise to mention, because when I'm mentioning what we can handle as a medical community, percentage-wise, we also have to factor in all those other things that happen seasonally, that will, for lack of a better term, take up rooms, take up beds, take up supplies, take up providers, et cetera.
Okay. Do either of the other two commissioners have questions of Dr. Polly?
Not.
He doesn't.
He does not? Okay. Dr. Polly, I'd like to thank you for being here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We see the sit rep come out quite frequently, and they talk about different age groups, 20 to 29, 29, 40 to 49, over 60. There's no mention of anybody under 20. Would you cover that a little bit?
So the under-20 age group is interesting, because they tend not to have as severe of symptoms, and there's obviously outliers. There are people who have been young across the country, have gotten severely sick. We've even seen morbidity and mortality secondary to this virus, but many of them tend to be, for lack of a better word, kind of carriers. I use that loosely in this situation, because they probably did have symptoms. A true carrier would be somebody who's entirely asymptomatic, but their symptoms might be minimal, runny nose, fever, GI upset, I mean, a wide variety of what we call viral-type So they're hard to follow. Unless you see them, diagnose them, treat them, they're not part of the data pool, typically. The problem is, we know they spread it. That would be our bigger concern.
You talked about harder to contact trace, and would you cover that again a minute? Because I thought I heard you say that it was harder for some than it was others, and it's just like when I go, maybe I've been into five businesses to get parts, or whatever, or repairs, and maybe I've been to the coffee shop, maybe I've been out to eat lunch. Isn't that harder to contact trace, if I come down with it, then?
Yeah, more, there are more individuals that you exposed in the preceding hours today's prior to diagnosis than if you had a more isolated 48 hours.
And so vice versa, you're talking about me exposing others. What about others exposing me?
Correct. So that really falls into that delay we currently have with our gold standard test, which results are back, ideally, two or three days, sometimes longer. We may test you on Monday, you go home and isolate yourself, or the correct word would be quarantine. On Wednesday, we let you know you're positive, and then we say, who were you around prior to us testing you, and you quarantined? Well, we can track those people down, but once we track those people down, we not only have to track them for the two or three days prior to your symptom onset, but also the two to three days between when you were tested and you were given the results. Whereas if we were to diagnose you on the spot Monday, we'd be able to contact trace three days prior, and the contacts of your contacts, then, would be at less risk, if that were.
What percentage have you come up with false positives and false negatives out of the test?
So that's difficult to say, because the current test we're using is, quote-unquote, "the gold standard." To be able to determine false negatives and false positives, you have to have a better test than the one you have to compare it to. So if you're wanting to, you want to compare it to perfection, which would be true positives, true negatives. The current send-out test that we're using here is the gold standard. Where the false negatives and false positives, which we commonly refer to as sensitivity and specificity, will be better measured in our rapid tests, but that will be measured against the gold standard that we've been using currently. We may lose some with the rapid test on specificity, in what we call false negatives, but where we gain is a two-to-three-day lead time to contact the 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 other people who may have been in contact with this individual. It's a little bit of a give-and-take. In the scenario of a rapidly-moving virus like this, I would rather, I'd rather give a little bit on the false negatives to gain a two- or three-day lead time to slow the spread of the fire. A good analogy by a Harvard epidemiologist was, if the local fire department's job was to get and prevent every house fire, don't put in fire alarms in houses that catch every match that's lit. They'd be too busy running to every house for a lit match or lit candle. Instead, set your defining line at, you know, a flamethrower or a blowtorch. That way, you're catching the big ones and preventing the real house fires, but you're not exhausting yourself running to every case of a little bit of smoke.
Yeah, I think all of us have heard lots and lots of different comparisons.
Okay. Dr. Polly, thank you very much for being here. I know you've been working closely through these months with the Health Department, and we appreciate it, and you're welcome at any time.
We and the rest of the community appreciate you all. Thank you.
Nick, do you have any thoughts or explanation of why the chart that Dr. Polly has presented this morning has gone up from 8% positives to 14% in the last week and a half?
I think Dr. Polly made mention of some of our clustering activity is certainly increasing those metrics, and the, you know, the exposure, timed exposure, and then symptom onset would be illustrative of a prior positive who has exposed somebody, the viral uptake and saturation to present symptoms, so that could be presenting some of the lag. Again, associated with, in particular, two of those clusters that we're actively working with. Outside of that, I, once we are able to get initial contact, and that be investigation on all of our new positives that came through over the weekend, I think it would better illuminate that activity as well. Again, just to clarify, Dr. Polly's data that he's presenting is not only specific for our community, but also the surrounding jurisdictions, because Hutch Clinic is a regional institution. But that is to say that the virus does not know jurisdictional boundaries, so anyway. But I can certainly further clarify any activity that I think is a mainstay to some of that upward-ticking trend that you see, as we complete that, those initial Epi investigations.
It was good to hear back from one cluster that had 103 tests, and three came back positive. So that was far below the 14%.
It's a fairly good percentage, yeah.
Okay. Are there other questions of our Health Department Director this morning? Okay, before we listen to Adam, Nick, I understand this is your last week. We appreciate very, very much, I think, everybody in the county that I've talked to, have thought that you've done an outstanding job. I appreciate all your efforts that you've done this spring. I know you've worked countless hours on this issue that we have in our community, in the world, and we wish you the best in the future, and please come back and see us.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You second that completely.
Sure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Adam?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weiser, Reno County Emergency Management Director. In respect to everyone's time, I'll be very, very brief this morning.
Excuse me. Nick, I don't know what your schedule is this morning, but is it possible for you to be here on Item 9, which is probably going to be an hour from now? Could you come back, please?
This is day 164 COVID. If you call, this started all the way back on March 1st. March 19th, the Board of County Commissioners declared a public health emergency, and that goes through December 31st, 2020. We're currently, 104 counties have an active declaration in place, and there's no change from last week. There's still 103 counties with active COVID-19 cases. Wallace and Rollins County do not have active cases. From a state standpoint, there's just a few things that are changing this week. They're talking about non-congregate shelters, fulfilling gaps, and making a few changes. We no longer have conference calls through the weekend, so we're getting a little bit of time back there. And then the state resource request process is going to change for probably the fourth time this week, so we'll see what that looks like. The Kansas Legislative Committee will meet about the Kansas Emergency Management Act on August 24th through 26th, so that could also change some state response. And then, I know we've been talking a lot about clusters. I won't break those entirely out for you, but currently, they're monitoring 119, the state's monitoring 119 active clusters, 2,950 cases of that. There's 152 hospitalizations and 36 deaths. As Director Baldetti spoke, there's three of those in Reno County currently. The travel exposure and quarantine guidelines has not changed since last week. Florida is still the only U.S. state on that list. Cruise ship or river cruise passengers are also on there, and then some international travel. That full list is found online. That's all I have for you this morning. You have any questions for me?
Are there questions of Adam this morning by the commission?
I have none.
Commissioner Bush, any questions of Adam?
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you, Adam, very much, for your report this morning. Our district attorney is in the audience. Do you have any comments to make before we proceed with the meeting, or are you just here to?
He's here on nine.
He's here on nine? Okay. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the meeting to public comments. I think there's some people outside the meeting room that want to make public comments today. I'll ask our gatekeeper to allow them in one at a time, because we do have 10 people in the room at this point in time. They need to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda today. Item 9 is the K through 8 mask resolution.
K through six.
K through six, I apologize. So I ask that that not be addressed at this point in time. So if there are people that want to talk on any other subject, please address the commission at this point in time. Please give your name and address, and due to the number of people wanting to address us this morning, I'm going to be very particular in limiting time to each individual. Thank you.
My name is John Weitzel. I live here in Hutchinson, 1707 East Blanchard, Lot 102, and I'm the Republican candidate for House District 102. 14 days to slow the spread, or everyone is going to be dead. That was what we heard back in March, and, holy crap, everybody did it. And then, there was a poll that came out, the Right Direction, Wrong Direction poll, and that is when it became a political issue. People started to believe that the country was going in the wrong direction, and Trump's numbers fell, and Biden's numbers rose. And so, there was a concerted effort to, we've got to keep the people miserable. Let's extend it. And since that time, we've developed therapeutics, we developed treatments, and we quit putting on people on ventilators right away, and we stopped sending positive COVID patients to nursing homes as a matter of national and state policy, not here in Kansas, but some of the early states like New York. And then, all of a sudden, hospital rates dropped, and deaths plummeted. So, well, gosh, if the hospital rates are down, and the deaths are down, well, let's test more, and then let's talk about how, when we test more, we've got more cases. But luckily, for the deadliest virus in the history of the world, we've got a solution. We just got to do this right here, and our shirt will protect us from the virus. And that's what we're telling people. Now, I do have an undocumented picture from Governor Kelly's Facebook page, where she's got a picture, and Kelly, we trust. And so, you know, maybe that's why she wanted to shut the churches down, maybe it's not. But, "In a time of universal deceit, telling the truth is a revolutionary act." George Orwell said that. And in five days, we were able to gather... And in five days, we were able to gather 740 petitions to ask the County Commission to stop the nanny state and to let us make our own decisions about what is best for us. So, and in your packet, I've got some science and some things. The, the very first thing I would bring up is the exhibit one right here, which is the chart that Dr. Norman put out in one of his press conferences. And as you can see on the right, there's a no mask scale, and on the left, there's a mask scale. On the right of this exhibit one, I have what it would look like with the same scale. As you can see, by the Health Department's own data, the mask mandate is not slowing the spread of the virus. I mean, that, that is clear. They had to doctor the data in order to make it seem like the masks were working. So we do have an actual test that has been done on the masks right here, and that is exhibit two. So, and what this finds is that in a large randomized clinical trial, actual science, people that wear masks have a much higher infection rate than those who don't, which may, may be the reason that we're seeing more hospitalizations, as the doctor said. But also, it says-
One minute, John.
Okay. Says that moisture retention, reuse of cloth masks, and poor filtration may result in increased infections. So, NIOSH is the CDC's expert body, and exhibits three and four are very clear when they say surgical masks provide no protection from the virus particles, and it also says so right on the boxes. And in number four, the CDC's expert body of scientists still concludes that there's no scientific evidence to support healthy people wearing the mask, and that it has no benefit at all, but it can have real harm. So we've gone too far, and we need to let people make their own decisions and end the mask mandates. Our hospitals can handle it. We have treatments. It's time to end the nanny state and give it, give us back our freedom. And what our petition says is, as citizens and our property owners in Reno County, I request the mandate be rescinded no later than August 18th because the decision to mandate the wearing of masks was not based on scientific evidence, because it is well-known that to date, there are no peer-reviewed scientific studies which demonstrate cloth masks reduce transmission, including aerosol transmission of SARS-2.
John, that's your time.
Okay.
Would you like to present those, or are you going to leave them, or?
I can, if you would like.
Whatever your desire.
So.
Please, if you want to present the petitions, please do so.
Okay.
Set them on the table. That's 740 signatures.
Yes, sir. And that was gathered in five days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there someone else that wants to speak to an item not on the agenda today? Limit your comments, please. We need your name and address, and limit your comments to less than five minutes.
I'm Dawn Varney of 34 East 27th Avenue. I'm a retired physician, was born in Hutchinson, and have lived here for the last 26 years. I have severe adult onset asthma, which began after a heart attack last year, and I personally have been told, stop being a baby and put on a mask. People like me who cannot or should not wear masks are being treated as social pariahs here in Reno County because of the mandate. Before going to medical school, I got my bachelor's degree in physiology at the University of California, and then became a medical researcher. I am co-author on the peer-reviewed scientific papers, both from when I was working at the University of Kansas in Kansas City, and later at Stanford University. Our N V 1 microperfusion of nephron segment research is cited in the two-volume medical textbook, The Kidney. While chief resident in nuclear medicine at the University of Washington in Seattle, I co-authored a case study in that field as well, and after finishing my residency continued with a nuclear medicine research fellowship. It greatly concerns me that our county has gone along with this unprecedented worldwide experiment, which has been foisted upon the people of Kansas without earned informed consent. Yes, I'm speaking of the masking of the masses for a disease with a decreasing 0.04% case death rate, according to the latest data as of Friday, August 8th, most of which is in the elderly and infirm. No mask removes all viruses, and it is unknown how many virus particles result in infection in either normal, healthy people or of immunocompromised people. What's truth? Frankly, we don't know, and the CDC and the WHO and the KDHE don't know either. Recently, KDHE Secretary Dr. Lee Norman, a family practitioner appointed by Governor Kelly, intentionally and disingenuously presented a graph of the seven-day rolling averages of COVID-19 cases in Kansas masked counties versus unmasked counties on completely different scales, and superimposing, making it appear to the casual observer that there's less COVID in masked counties, and thus inferring that the governor's edict must be working. However, that is exactly erroneous, false, wrong conclusion, due simply to his intentional manipulation of the data to attempt to justify his and the governor's political agenda. As you can clearly see, he used completely different scales for masked and non-masked counties, and then overlaid them together as one graph. On the left, Y-axis, masked counties, the red line, ranged from about 25 down to 16 cases for 100,000, but on the right-hand Y-axis, non-masked counties, drawn in blue, are steady, between eight and 10 cases. Now, if you look at the actual numbers, on the left side, he used whole numbers, but on the right side, he wrote the extra significant figure, point zero, after the whole number, conveniently making the number look visually larger and further trying to further, to confuse us at first glance. Now, let's look at the horizontal line midway up the graph. On the left side, the masked county number is 21. That is shown as being equal to the right-hand number of unmasked counties at 10.0. Only in a corrupt world are 10 and 21 equal. Now, let's look at this correct graph, in which the data are plotted on the same identical scale. In fact, masked counties have more COVID cases than non-masked counties. Why, I don't know, but that's not the question before us today. What is before us today is that such misleading presentation of the data by the state's top public health doctor is not science, it's politics, paramount to line to the public and to you. He uses false graphs to claim that the counties abiding by the mask mandates are, quote, "winning the battle." All the improvements in the case development comes from those counties wearing masks," unquote. Sirs, we cannot blindly trust our leaders. The paradigm of informed consent in human medical research has been evolving for decades. It is permission to allow oneself to participate in the experiment, having been given information of the possible consequences and full knowledge of the potential risks and benefits. As involuntary participants of this great masking experiment, and specifically of the Kansas edict penned by Governor Kelly, we, the people, have not been provided with an explanation of the risk and benefits of mandated masks. And unlike in real science, in this grand experiment, there is no control group in which participants do not wear masks, while the other group does wear masks. It's not science.
Unintended.
Unintended consequences is always a concern of any action, such unintended consequences and masking was brought to light just last week. Dentists are now warning about unexpected oral health problems associated with prolonged use of masks, which can cause serious complications, such as periodontal disease, which can lead to strokes and increased risk of heart attacks. To quote one dentist, "We're seeing inflammation in people's gums that have been healthy forever, and cavities in people who have never had them before. About 50% of our patients have been impacted by this. We decided to name it Mask Mouth after Meth Mouth." Sirs, I could clarify further, and there are other points I could make, such as the study produced by Duke University yesterday. We are here to flatten the curve, not stop the virus. That's impossible. We can always institute masks if we get to a point where our medical resources are being overwhelmed. But it is my honest belief that we're being duped intentionally or unintentionally by a global referendum that is not backed by solid science, and I respectfully urge you Commissioners to reconsider and rescind the ordinance requiring masks here in Reno County. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for reading so quickly. Appreciate it. And you got, you did it under five minutes. Thank you. Is there a next person? Name and address, and limit your comments to less than five minutes, please.
My name is Benjamin Garrett. I live at 18519 West Blanchard, Abbeville. Good morning, County Commissioners. I grew up in Reno County, and I've always appreciated how friendly and hardworking the people are here. And now, I senior at Sterling College, majoring in business administration and concentrating in finance and economics. I'm a 3.7 grade point average student, and I am involved in many activities, both on and off campus. In addition to being very involved, a very involved student, I work a lot of hours during the school year to keep from achieving a bunch of debt. This summer, I worked 45 hours a week at one job and part-time at another. In addition to those jobs, I have made advancements in a small video business. My time as a student is almost over, and I'm thinking about where I want to go with my business after college. I want to invest in a community, but I also want to see a lot of growth in my business. I've found that many owners of businesses were some of my greatest supporters in signing the petition. I see my employers and others struggling to meet the demands of the mask mandate. Seeing that both of my jobs are physical labor, I have seen firsthand how difficult it is for my fellow employees to comply. They struggle with getting oxygen, that they need to do their work efficiently and effectively. I have experienced the difficulty of the mask by getting severe migraines at the end of my shifts and having difficulty seeing because my glasses fog up. I also struggle with getting enough oxygen to do my job effectively. In the business world, it's hard to make profit. When we encounter inefficiencies, some businesses go under. This has a great impact on our society, and everyone suffers. Some of our businesses have not, not been able to make it through the difficult year we've had. And my simple request is that we consider the difficult, consider the cost of the mandate that affects us so much, and that we ensure that our decisions are based on solid facts that are tried and true. Your decision, decisions will affect the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin.
I'd like to comment a minute, if I may. I appreciate the fact that we've got a young man in here, a young person in here that's going to college, took time out to come from his hard work, which he's certainly showed, to present to the, to the Commission. And I'd also encourage you, since you are in that entrepreneurship stage, that you contact a startup, Hutch, and see what they have to offer to you with regarding the starting business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Please give your name and address, and limit your comments to less than five minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate having this open meeting. My name is Dennis Hirschberger. I'm at 8812 South Halsted Street, and I have a medical background and also in farming down there in Yoder area. And I'm just concerned that, I'd have to say too, that I'm part of the Reno County Republican Leadership Committee. So I'm just concerned about the psychosocial aspects of this, how it has affected people's lives, and I'm thinking that in the future, if we look forward to mandates that will put people at odds with each other and also create a social distancing type of thing, that there's going to be a lot of fallout from that, just from an emotional and psychological standpoint. It really bothers me that there may be effects that happen even in church-related areas where people gather together on Sundays or have midweek services, and, and that will drive people away from using that as a common way of, of their spiritual lives. I'm also interested in that the, the mask itself seems to me, from my experience in the hospital setting, that it is, it can be a Petri dish for retaining things that people are exposed to in the hospital. When I was there, they always had infection control areas, and as you entered that area, you would take a disposable mask, you'd wear it in that area, and as soon as you left that area, you would dispose of it. To me, that tells me that this is something that shouldn't be used daily and reused and actually create a bigger problem from the infection standpoint. I'd also encourage the Commissioners to pull up a recent ad from South Dakota from Governor Noem, and she's inviting people to come to South Dakota where they don't have mandates. And also, they're having the motorcycle rally at Sturgis currently, and there's going to be over 250,000 people there, and I'm certain that most of those people won't be wearing masks. So we will have something to look forward to as far as data from South Dakota. They've, they've been able to contain the virus there, and the people are living normal lives, and that's where I would hope we would live here in Reno County in Kansas. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dennis, for joining us today. Please state your name and address, limit your comments to less than five minutes.
My name is Jonathan Garrett, and my address is 18519 West Blanchard, Abbeville, Kansas. So I just, I thank you for all, for taking our comments, and I guess my approach probably is more of a libertarian than a medical standpoint. There's been a lot of people who have more medical experience and knowledge than I have. I'm not against masks, but I'm against the mandate. So that's where I have my biggest problem, and I was on board with 15 days to slow the spread. But I feel like it's now become 30 days to slow the spread, 45 days to slow the spread, and I think we are starting to lose sight of our goal as far as what we are going to do to prevent this virus. I think it's becoming more of a long-term solution to just do all these countermeasures that were meant to be very short-term. I've also seen a lot of economic impact from the virus, which I feel is going to impact us long-term. Our national debt has gone up from 23 trillion early in the year to, it's in the mid 26 trillion, and that's directly from shutting down businesses, and then we've got to finance them because we made them shut down. I also think that there, when we make a mandate or a rule, we create inconsistencies because we have to say, there's so many situations once you start down that road. You, you have the churches, and you have the protests, and we can assemble in big groups of protesters, but we can't assemble in churches. So we just have to make a rule for each little thing if we start down the road where individual responsibility is no longer considered the primary thing that we go with. Also, the world's not perfect, and we're going to have death. It's just a part of life, and I think that's something we need to come to terms with. We can't have 100%. We're going to have, and, I mean, this virus is a new virus, so it takes a while to build up immunity to it, and we're going to have some death from it, and I think we just have to be comfortable with some of that. And then I think it's also something I haven't heard people talking about, but we need to be boosting our immune systems. I don't think we should be making a mandate to boost your immune system, but we're doing so much to protect ourselves from the virus, but, I mean, why not ban soda pop or something like that if we're going to make people wear masks? So I think we just need to be consistent with what we're doing as far as mandates. Thank you.
Jonathan, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your brevity. Are there others that want to speak to this item, or to any item that's not on the agenda? Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to less than five minutes.
My name is Connie Newcomb. I actually live in McPherson County, but we own property in Reno County. I went and spoke to the McPherson County Commission when they had this issue come up before them, and I would like to, the, express a few ideas that I have had. I would like to say that for decades, we have been exposed to viruses and germs, actually for centuries since the beginning of time. This is nothing new. The exposure to germs and viruses helps us to build immunity, is a natural part of how we become strong and immune. A few minutes ago, we did the flag salute. We said, "For liberty and justice for all." Where is there liberty when we're shackling people by muzzling them every day? The Constitution has nothing to say about, is liberty and justice only if there's no viruses or germs going around? Liberty and justice is supposed to be for all at all times, and as Americans, risk is a part of life. Actually, for anyone in the world, risk is a part of life. Every year, for over 100 years, we had the State Fair. People were rubbing shoulders with strangers, they were spreading their viruses and their germs, and yes, there was a few extra people in the hospital, but no one gave a thought to using a public restroom where hundreds of other people had used it. Now we're all cowering in fear. Essential, what is essential? Businesses are essential, so Lowe's and Home Depot and the grocery stores are essential, and we make decisions about what is essential. I declare that it is essential for people to breathe freely. Oxygen is the most essential element of life. It's more essential than food, drink, or water, and now we are going to muzzle the very breath of life, the very most essential thing that we have to have, because we have had one death in Reno County. 387 deaths in the whole state out of 3 million people, a very low percentage. This is very comparable to the flu, and we didn't shutter the schools down, we didn't wear masks, we didn't shut the economy down for the flu. People, more people would have signed these petitions, except they were afraid of reprisal. That should be a frightening thing. People are afraid to express their opinion because they are afraid they will lose their job. I think that is very concerning. are afraid they will lose their job. I think that is a very concerning thing. We are also making our children anxious and depressed. There is, the rates of suicide, depression, anxiety, and family abuse have gone up since we've had this COVID issue. So I think we need to consider that. Is wearing a mask going to bring about stability in the community? Is it going to make people feel safe? Is it going to make us feel like we're returning to normal? Are we wanting our children to be exchanging masks with each other because you have to wear a mask when you go somewhere so they can breathe in other people's germs and viruses? Are we wanting them to grow up thinking that normal is wearing a mask? So you don't need to be afraid of anyone who wears a mask anymore because mom and dad do it and everyone else is doing it. So is this what we want to promote to our children? This is affecting, like some other people have said, churches and schools and the population at large. Many decisions have to be made based on this mandate because people want to obey their government. But I don't think the government should have autonomy over us as persons about what we wear. And broadly speaking...
One minute, Connie.
Yes, I'm about done. This was very much off the cuff. Broadly speaking, we give autonomy to people to kill their babies, but we're not going to give autonomy to people to choose whether or not they can breathe without being muzzled. So I appreciate you listening to me. I appreciate having this opportunity. This is one of the American rights that we have to petition for our grievances. And I think it's good to give it a bigger picture than just the routine things that we're hearing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Connie. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to an item not on the agenda today? Okay, if not, we'll move ahead with determining additions or revisions to the agenda. Do any of the commissioners have any additions to the agenda today?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. Does the county administrator have any additions to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to, or request the stop sign resolution for Carley Lane to be added to the consent agenda.
Okay, is there any objection from any of the commissioners to adding the request from Public Works to put a stop sign at Carley Lane as it approaches South Broad Acres Road?
Where do you want that on the agenda?
In the consent.
In the consent agenda?
Would be item G.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
There's, we will add that if there's no objection. It'll be item G, is adding a stop sign per the request of our Public Works Director, Don Britton, to put a stop sign on a new street that ends up at South Broad Acres Road. Okay, if there's no other additions, we'll assume the agenda is as stated. We'll move on to the consent agenda. It's items A through G. Vouchers in the amount of $374,181.61. A change order 2020-377. Appointment of Joe Sullivan and Bill Hermes as members of the canvassing board for August 13th. The canvas of the August 4th primary election. And I might state that those two people would be joining Commissioner Hurst at that canvassing. Resolution 2020-24, designating depositories for Reno County funds. Resolution 2020-25, designating the official county newspaper and declaring certain Public Works property as surplus, such that it could be sold at auction. And then item G, which we just discussed, which is adding a stop sign on a county road. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Would anybody like to discuss any of these items, A through G?
Just one clarification. At the time for the canvassing is nine o'clock. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Just for public notice.
That will be in the conference room in the Annex Building at nine o'clock this coming Thursday. If there's no other discussion, I'd like the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. This time, we have a public hearing on the special districts' budgets. We need to have a motion to open the public hearing.
I would move to open a public hearing in special districts' budget adaptation, adoption.
Is there a second, please?
Okay.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. County Administrator, would you please have the discussion on this hearing?
Yes. This, for the public hearing, the special districts are the fire districts and the sewer districts, Water District in Reno County. And those are all on a certificate page that you have in front of you showing that the mill levy has changed, or gone down in all but one. The bond and interest of Fire District number nine is, has an increase of .003, but the same district's bond and interest fund went down .051. So the net, it's still a net decrease. So all of them had net decreases based on some valuations that have increased. All the districts have expenditure or budget authority for 2021 that is at or above the 2020 budget. So they should be fine. I've sent out an email to all the fire districts, tried to reach them, and did not hear back from any fire districts that had a problem with the budget. I had also sent this previously to Adam, Emergency Management Director, who works with the fire districts, and he didn't see any problems with this either.
Okay, is there any other person in the audience that wants to discuss this during the public hearing? Seeing none, are there questions of the commission before we close the public hearing?
I have none.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. We move on to adopting these, the budgets for these special districts for the 2021 budget. County Administrator, please.
The 2021 budget for this would have a total estimated tax rate for all the districts combined, 146.955, and they're each individual. Did you want me to read each of those individually? Or?
I don't believe that's necessary unless there's a request by one of the commissioners. We have that in our packet. The public has it in the agenda. Is there any requests to read these individually?
Not from me.
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the Reno County Special District's 2021 budgets?
No move.
Second, the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item nine. The first item is to consider a resolution and order by the Board of County Commissioners relating to public health that includes provisions less stringent than the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 2059, which has been prepared by Commissioner Joe Sullivan. I'm sorry, County Counselor Joe Sullivan. He just got promoted. You know, at times, Joe, it'd be good for you to be up here instead of some of the rest of it.
I'm just fine back here.
You're back, fine. I think that there's some people outside that want to speak to this. The commissioners have these resolutions in their packet. Is there any discussion by the commission before we allow public discussion on this item?
I think I would like to have County Counselor Joe Sullivan go over this prior to any comments.
Okay, Joe?
For clarification purposes.
Thank you.
If that's all right with you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Commissioners. County Counselor Joe Sullivan, just to put this in some context, it was two weeks ago that in your public comment portion of your meeting, two school superintendents and staff appeared seeking information from the county as to what, if anything, the county was planning to do with respect to Governor's Executive Order 2059. That's an executive order that, in which the governor imposed certain requirements on public and private schools they were opening. And at that time, of course, I think there was an assumption that perhaps the county was working on that independently. But the county's authority under House Bill 2016 is to, is to address requirements that are thought to be excessive or to provide, their authority is to provide less restrictive requirements than what the governor has ordered. And so, we had not heard from any of the districts with respect to any concerns that they had. And that meant that then, subsequent to their comments, I obtained copies of the reopening plans that the school districts had submitted to the local health officer. And there were two of those out of six. Two districts had submitted plans. I was told by Nick Baldetti at that time that three school districts, I believe at that Hutchinson, Bueller, and Haven, had, the school boards had decided to comply with the governor's order. And the two districts that were here and for which I received plans were from Pretty Prairie and from Fairfield, and we had not heard from Nickerson at that time. So in looking over those plans and then talking to the, talking to the superintendents, we had an executive session a week ago in which I reviewed with you the plans that had been submitted and their content. Most of those plans were done in consultation with Nick Baldetti, and they, for the most part, were consistent with the governor's order. With respect to the Fairfield, Fairfield wanted to lessen the requirement that children K through four wear masks. If the Pretty Prairies plan, and by the way, they had not been adopted by that time, and the school districts have adopted plans, I haven't seen the finals, but with respect to Pretty Prairie's plan, under the circumstances currently present in Reno County with a number of active COVID cases, the Pretty Prairie plan that was presented to the board would require, would be consistent with the governor's order with respect to the wearing of masks. So from that meeting, and I discussed with you your authority under House Bill 2016 to address the governor's order, and we discussed the possibilities, including doing nothing and drafting an order, I felt that there was a consensus among the members that at that time, a week ago, you wished to consider giving relief to the school districts from the requirement that children kindergarten through the sixth grade wear masks. And so with that in mind, I have prepared this order today in that regard. I would like to point out that what this order is not, the order that you have before you today does not require children to wear masks. It does not require children not to wear masks. This, the governor's order, excuse me for stuttering here, Governor's Order 2059 is directed at school districts, at school administrators and boards of education. It requires them to require, it orders them to require students, faculty, staff, vendors, and other visitors to public and private K-12 school attendance centers to wear masks. So Governor's Order 59 is directed to the administration of schools. It is not, it does not require these students to wear masks. So the issue is before you today is the, there's a number of findings that I put in the resolution, which you're required to make with respect to any order that you issue. One of them is that you've consulted with a local health officer, which you have. Another is that you find that implementation of the full scope of the provisions in the governor's executive order is not necessary to protect the public health and safety within Reno County at this time. And that you find it to be in the public interest to be less restrictive than the governor's executive order with respect to mandating that public and private schools require students in grades K through six to wear masks or other face coverings at all times while at school attendance centers, and that you desire to issue an order to this effect. So this order itself is, is on the second page, and it states that, "Be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that Reno County's exercise of local authority over this subject matter will be less restrictive than required by the provisions of Executive Order Number 2059 in the following respect." And that is this, requiring students in grades K through six to cover their mouths and noses with a mask or face coverings at all times while at school attendance centers shall not be required of public and private school governing bodies or administrators within Reno County. In essence, what, this is not about whether masks are worn or not worn directly. This, it doesn't directly affect that. What this does is, it places the authority to decide those issues in the judgment of the local school boards. And there's a finding that those public and private school governing bodies and administrators are in the best position to determine and regulate when mask wearing for young students and their care is appropriate, practicable, or necessary. And that's from a discussion that the school districts in Reno County vary in size. They vary in, in terms of students, in terms of faculty, in terms of facilities. They're not all the same. And so it's a question as, and to this effect, you have to, you have to intervene and to allow these school districts to deviate from the governor's order for them to have that authority. If you do that, then it's up to them to decide whether masks will be required for children K through six. The governor's order covers children seven through 12, and the school district, your order does not relieve that particular requirement. So it just is a partial, it's a partial lessening of the restriction pertaining to the age of the childrens, to the children. So I think a lot of people think this is, that you were going to order, that wants you to order that the masks be worn, others want you to order the masks not be worn. All you're doing if you adopt this order is indicating that the wearing of masks for children of that age is not mandated, and you're leaving that in the authority of the local elected officials who manage those schools.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that brief explanation. Okay, I want, and I'm assuming there's more people outside that want to address this subject, and certainly will allow anybody that wants to address this subject to speak if they so decide to speak. Would our district attorney like to speak at this point in time? But before you do, I guess, Joe, help me here. Unless there's a motion and a second for this resolution, we don't need to be discussing the resolution. Would you not agree?
Among the board members themselves?
Yeah, well, again, I'm not limiting the discussion to anybody, but it seems like... but it seems like to me that at this time, it might be prudent to see if there is a motion and a second to even discuss the subject among the commissioners. Is that pertinent?
Uh, I, I, that's just fine, yeah, you can certainly do that.
Because, you know, most, Commissioner Hurst has always said everything is worth discussion. Uh, if, if there's not two people on the commission that want to discuss this subject, I, I don't know that we need to be discussing it.
I always like to hear from other people.
Okay, we'll continue the discussion, District Attorney, please.
Then the discussion can begin among the commissioners at the point that there is a motion and a second.
Certainly.
I appreciate you taking me first, Tom Stanton, District Attorney. Um, I think I have another meeting to go to, so I appreciate the, the opportunity. First of all, I'm not here to talk about this policy, what you're finally going to do. Um, as you know, my office is in charge of enforcement of any orders that, that come out, whether it be governor's orders or local orders. I will tell you that I have not received a single complaint referred to my office, um, on any masking order from July second, when, when, uh, twenty-fifty-two came out until the present. So, at this point, nobody has referred a masking complaint to my office for action. So, I thought you might be interested in knowing that. Uh, the, the only thing I'm here to, to express is, I believe that, that Mr. O'Sullivan has laid it out properly, twenty, uh, House Bill twenty-sixteen, uh, clearly gives this, uh, board, uh, the authority to limit, uh, or to make more, uh, or less stringent, any order, any statewide order by, by the governor. So, these are both fifty-two and fifty-nine, or are subject to your restrictions. I think if you look at the intent behind this legislation, it was to try to get local jurisdictions to make decisions that affect those, uh, people in their jurisdiction. So, from the state down to county, now you're faced with a situation where you have multiple school districts, each, if you will, uh, with their own jurisdiction. And so the question is, do you want to give, uh, their, uh, their boards the authority to make this decision? That's, that's, that's all this is about. Obviously, I will, my office will enforce whatever order, uh, the commission presents, but it, it is not a, and this is not a situation in which, uh, you will be ordering one way or another, how, what, what masks, uh, are worn and, and, and who wears them. You're just given the authority to local school districts. Yeah, I don't, I don't have the knowledge to, to know what happens in every school district. I think those, those people involved in those school districts probably have the best knowledge, but that's, that's, it's a position that, that you can take. I could tell you that we're not going to be putting anybody in, and out of my office, into the school system to see if anybody is wearing masks. As I've indicated before, we have no, we have no, um, resources to do that, just like we don't have the resources to check people in the community. So, um, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
I don't have any other commissioners. No. Tom, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
Appreciate your attendance. Bob, do you have a question of District Attorney?
No, I just, I just did, thank you, Tom, that's all.
Thank you, mhm. Okay, I'd like the next, uh, call on our, uh, County Health Officer, Nick Baldetti, to come to speak about this. Uh, this resolution says that we've been in consultation, uh, with the local health officer regarding executive order. Would you state your position at this point in time on whether the county commission should adopt this resolution or not?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioner Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health, uh, Officer, appointed health officer, uh, and then Director of Health Department. Um, yeah, I know we've communicated via email, um, and I've said, uh, a few times in, in these chambers, um, understanding that the resolution placed in front of you is regarding, um, delegation of authority or allowance of authority to the local school districts, um, to, uh, whether they uphold mask use uh, within, within their schools and within their district, um, uh, or, or decide to, uh, decide not to, again, it's, again, that resolution is the aspect of authority for them to be able to make that decision. Through much communication that I've received, um, through many constituent employee, um, and, uh, and, uh, school administrators from multiple districts, um, far more in the, it, by way of asking for Executive Order twenty-dash-fifty-nine more so than, uh, or in support of twenty-dash-fifty-nine than not. In addition, the aspect of, uh, like I said earlier, many times I've spoken to fundamental mitigating strategies to try and ensure the slowest spread. And again, our goal here is to, um, our goal is not to just simply get schools to open, but instead, we want to have schools for, open as long as possible. Um, I fear that, um, if we were to delegate that down to the school boards, um, based off of presentations from multiple boards that, that I've witnessed and communication, I think it is entirely divisive within our community, within those elected boards. Um, and, uh, I, I fear in some respects that, um, unfortunately, politics will overtake, um, uh, mitigating strategies, uh, moving forward. And again, my fear, uh, nothing is certain by any stretch of the imagination. We've certainly lived through uncertainty since March. But, uh, my fear is that, um, given the option that we may have some districts that, uh, loosen restrictions on mask use in some of the plans that were presented to Mr. O'Sullivan and myself, uh, the plans themselves suggest no mask use at the beginning, and then will shift to mask use once cases present in schools. Well, that strategy is opposite of the very mitigating strategy we're trying to prevent. We were trying to prevent cases from presenting and mass-spreading in schools, not react by slowing, um, slowing the spread in the dispersal pattern, uh, waiting for a positive to already be within the schools. Um, and therefore, as the health officer from a public health perspective, uh, I, I believe that the Board of County Commissioners can provide cover fire for those elected, uh, those elected boards, um, and those administrators in that, um, there's an effective Executive Order twenty-dash-fifty-nine that installs fundamental mitigating practices, again, with the impetus to try and slow the spread as much as possible, to try and have as normal as a fall as possible with kids in school for as long as possible. And in that respect, uh, I, I would not be in support of this resolution in that I think it provides the necessary cover fire for districts to ensure, ensure, and an assurity to those, um, communities that those mitigative strategies are going to be adhered to where their kids go to school.
Okay, thank you, Nick, very much.
What brought about your change?
Say that again.
What brought about your change?
Uh, in terms of the, the age differences, I assume, I assume that's what you're, you're referring to, Commissioner?
No, the overall plans.
Say.
The overall plans that you saw, uh, I thought last time you were very positive about those plans, and so I just wondered what had brought about, what had brought about the change.
Well, the plans themselves in terms of reopening, in totality, are good plans. However, in each plan, and, and Mr. O'Sullivan and I have had these conversations too, the recommendation of adherence to twenty-dash-fifty-nine in regard to masks was always communicated in those plans. So, mask use has never wavered from the position of the health officer, but the plans themselves, in totality, in terms of safety measures, cohorting classrooms, sanitation practices, all of that in effect are, looked, looked good and was communicated as such. But the comments that I provided to all plans as they were presented to me was adherence to twenty-dash-fifty-nine in terms of mask use.
I, I didn't take it that way, uh, at all, because some of those had plans included, uh, options. And, uh, last time I thought they were, they were, you were positive towards those plans that included options, providing upon different structured plans. Uh, didn't hear any negative from, from you at that time. So, that's just my curiosity.
When, when you say options, I mean, we could, we could go into the details all day, but when you say options, are you talking about in the absence of social distancing? Are you talk, talking about cohorting? Uh, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, what?
I think, Commissioner Hurst, if I, I might try to rephrase his question.
Yeah.
It's his feeling that, uh, a week or ten days ago, when this subject was addressed, that it was your position that K through six would be appropriate in your mind not to wear masks? Is that the question, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, okay, yeah, so, yeah, uh, at the time, uh, and again, information continues to rapidly evolve, but the concern has always predicated with schools specifically is about their potential of spreading, leaving school and coming home. New research and information is coming out in terms of the saturation. I shared some of those new literature studies with you via email in terms of the, the viral threshold and loading that is presented in, in kids ages five and less. This was communicated specifically to the Pretty Prairie Board last week on Monday as well in terms of the saturation is, in some respects, ten to a hundred times more in five and under, and it, and then it increases in that bracket from five to twelve, and then thirteen and on up, which creates a lot of concern and uncertainty in terms of those kids coming home and sharing to their, their parents, their parents go to work, grandparents, et cetera. The information that continues to come out continues to, to rapidly change, but we have to study it as well, such as the nature of science. And so, um, so that would be some of the, uh, information that would have shifted my tone a little bit from ten to fourteen days ago versus where I stand today. And that, again, we are seeking to try and have as normal of a fall as possible, and we want kids to be in school. What I would hate for us to see is that we proceed with school reopening with loosened restrictions, in which case we have a large cluster outbreak in one of our smaller districts in particular that forces, forces different action versus being able to have our kids in school.
So, you're saying that the state's twenty-dash-fifty-nine is all uniform, and that local control based upon local conditions is not as important? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay.
I, I believe, I believe in local control. What I'm offering to you is the position that the Board of County Commissioners, you have the opportunity to say that that control rests here at the Board of County Commissioners, or this resolution presents that you now give that down to the districts, in which case I, from my position in the, on the conversations that I've been privy to in terms of districts, is just as divisive, and we will see differing approaches in the districts within Reno County. So, what I'm suggesting is that that local control rests here at the Board of County Commissioners versus titrating down to each individual district, which we have six in Reno County. But I am an advocate for local control. I am.
Okay, there are more questions of the Health Director at this point? Okay, at this point, Bob?
Uh, sir, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nick, we might have some questions later on. Uh, are there people in the audience that want to address the, uh, resolution that the county commission is considering? Uh, please state your name and address, and again, uh, please limit your, uh, comments to as brief as possible. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Kuhn. Um, I live at one-one-three-zero-four West Eighty-second in Nickerson, Kansas. I am an educator, I'm a teacher. So, when Mr. Baldetti is saying these things and giving this information out about him, about what's going on in our county, I'm in support of what he's saying. Um, I am very concerned, um, that if the commission decides to allow the school districts to change this for our younger elementary students, that, um, it's just not the students that we're concerned about. We also have to think about the entire staff of the building. So, it's not just students, it's not just teachers, it's our custodians, it's our secretaries. And so, the goal, I think, with reopening schools at this time is to get us to, to hopefully stay in school. And if this one little piece of equipment can possibly help us stay in school longer so I can teach my kids, that's what I want to do. By the way, I do want to interject, I'm an eighth-grade language arts teacher, so this actual thing would not affect me directly. I'm speaking on behalf of my fellow teachers that are concerned about this issue. So, I just want to make sure that the commission understands that I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a medical professional. I am not a politician. I am, I'm not a commissioner, I do not know what all of your jobs entail. I know what my job entails. And I want to make sure that I'm safe, I want to make sure my colleagues are safe, I want to make sure my students are safe. And so, if this little piece of equipment, right here, this, that's supposed to help, and, and nothing, I know nothing is one-hundred percent safe, we all know that. But if this can help, then I say we try to do as much as we can so we can stay in school as long as we can stay in school.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth, thank you very much for your remarks, very concise and well said. Okay, are there others in the audience that would like to address the commission on this subject? Please state your name and address.
Uh, Marcy Sharon.
Okay.
Marcy Sharon, my address is twenty-five East Fifteenth here in Hutch. Um, I just want to say that I have been an educator for close to thirty years. Um, I've also been an administrator within a school building. Um, and this is the first time that as a teacher, I have addressed any governing board. Um, certainly I did as an administrator. Um, but I feel like this is really crucial. Um, I, myself, have underlying health concerns. Um, I, I'm a, I'm a science teacher, and I by no means can, um, medically speak the way that Dr. Polly spoke, the way that Dr. Baldetti spoke. Um, but I, I do rely on science. Um, I rely on, and I know that science needs to be credible, it needs to be reliable. And I would ask you to consider sources when people are engaging with you about why it's important to wear a mask, or why it's not important to wear a mask. Um, in speaking with my own physician, um, kids are very resilient. Kids have less trouble with a mask than the adults. And I want to say that, um, I had to say a little prayer while I was out there waiting because there were, for a couple of reasons. Um, for one thing, I think the biggest thing is fear, and it's fear for myself, fear for my family, fear for my friends, my loved ones, because there were a lot of people out there without a mask. And they're not, you know, we have, we have freedoms in this country until they infringe upon someone else's freedoms. And, um, I hope that you read the letter that I emailed to you just the other day, um, because I feel like, you know, those freedoms, we, this is a temporary thing. And some people said, well, this is long-term. Well, it's, it's less long-term if we all follow the rules. And so, um, you know, I think it becomes long-term when we choose not to follow those rules. I do understand underlying health concerns and will account for those in our school buildings, but I am, you know, I've been in this district, the district I'm in in Reno County for this, it will be my fifth year, and I have come to love my colleagues, I've come to respect them, and I, as, as, uh, Ms. Kuhn said, I want them to be safe.
Sure.
I want to be safe. Um, my, my, um, father, who's seventy-three years old, had a, has a friend who's been sixteen days on a ventilator, and, um, he didn't wear a mask, and he said, he didn't need to wear a mask, is what he told my father. He said, I don't need to wear a mask, I was in the Army, we were exposed to a lot worse. I don't think that's what he would be saying at this point. So, um, I thank you for your time, and, um, you know, I, I do believe that, um, as Dr. Baldetti said, it is a divisive community issue, and I believe the buck needs to stop with this commission. It needs to stop here.
Marcy, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here. Other people in the audience that wants to comment today? Please, your name and address, please, and limit your comments to as brief as possible.
Thank you, Commissioners. I am here with my colleagues. This is Scott Wedeman, 2906 Tartan Trail. And I'm just going to reiterate what they said about why we want to experiment with our children in this safe zone. And whether or not it's effective or not effective, I believe the school is not the place to be experimenting with this. I think that we should support even the tiniest safety precaution when it comes to our children. Whether or not it's going to be an age limit, K through six, and they're going to be healthy without a mask, they're going to be on a bus with these older kids, they're going to be in the community with their fellows, the teachers, and we've got to look at the entire world that these children are living on. And I think we have to address all these points of contact that these kids are making. This is just, it's hard to speak to without getting emotional about what we want to do with these kids. Do we want to take the risk with these kids, their safety, with our teachers, our coworkers?
Scott, would you tell us what grades you teach?
I'm a middle school teacher with my colleagues that are here today. So, and I think by taking this ordinance and loosening it, I think we've already spoken to where this becomes that political weapon, that we're taking this and we're transferring it to our children's safety. Do we want to do that with our children? Do we want to say it's okay to take this risk because we feel that there's a political argument that we're having about this mass effectiveness? I don't think we want to take that risk. And I think this Board can stand and support this resolution a little bit longer and hopefully support our school districts with making the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
I have a question, if I may.
Yeah, a question from Commissioners to you.
Did you receive my email?
Yes, I did.
Would you care to comment the fact about teachers not following their own mandates to wear masks when they met together?
Yeah, from what I observed, and I, yeah, on your comment, it was our board meeting, whether or not the teachers were observing the mask ordinance. And what I observed and what I did myself is, once we were out of the school building, once we were out in the parking lot, we maintained social distance, and our conversations were held to those social distance standards. There was no masks that I observed being taken off in that meeting. The only mask I observed not being worn was by our Board President.
Yeah, well, that's different than what has been reported out there about meeting in the gym together with masks off.
Yeah, I can speak to what I did not witness.
Yeah, I just thought I would ask that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others outside that want to address this subject? Welcome. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments, less than five minutes, please, on this subject.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Welker, 415 East Collins, Pretty Prairie, Kansas. Also here, but he doesn't plan to speak, is Leon McDaniel, who's a resident of Kingman County, but is a part of the Pretty Prairie community. There's no doubt, as you know, the mask mandate is a major issue. It's very divisive. It's divisive within our community, it's dividing our parents, it's dividing our teaching staff. We all want kids in school, we all want the kids to be safe.
Jeff, are you a member of the Board at Pretty Prairie?
I am, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board.
Okay, you're speaking as an individual.
I'm speaking as an individual, okay? So I want to make that very clear. Many are objecting to the masks, and the question always comes up, does the Governor have that right to make that mandate? Teachers are asking if it's okay to disobey an order. Teachers are asking, you know, what is this teaching our kids if we teach them to disobey an order? Are our rights being infringed upon? You know, I think one of the great cases is Rosa Parks, who stood up for her rights by remaining seated. And sometimes civil disobedience is one of those things that happens. It's already been discussed about, has this become political? Maybe it has, maybe it hasn't. Certainly, the graph that Dr. Norman presented last week adds to that fire. But the real question with schools and this whole issue, problems are best solved at the level closest to the problem. One size doesn't fit all. That doesn't work in Washington, it doesn't work in Topeka. And in this particular case, I don't even believe it works in Reno County. We're a very diverse county. We have a large city, we have a lot of small towns, and we have a lot of wide open spaces. I would like to see you allow the school districts to decide what they believe is best for them. That's at the level closest to the problem. I look at some of the other things that have come out. If you're aware of what the Kansas State High School Activities Association has proposed for the sports, there's a lot of inconsistencies with things. Mr. Baldetti has alluded in some of the discussions we've had with him. If you're not familiar, I'll give you an example in football. Football is going to be played as it always is. We're going to tackle, we're going to block, we're going to run the ball, we're going to throw the ball. But at the end of the game, we're not going to do the traditional lineup and shake hands and show good sportsmanship. That doesn't make any sense after we've just spent all the last two hours rubbing against each other. So, you know, with six public schools, two private schools in our county, you know, Hutchinson is very different than Pretty Prairie or Fairfield. I attended Fairfield schools. My daughter teaches there. Fairfield and Pretty Prairie are different from Haven and Nickerson, which are different from Hutchinson and Bueller. And then, of course, we have Trinity and Central Christian. So I'm just asking you to let us, at a local level, let the parents have input and let us decide. One thing that bothers me is, all I've heard is, we want to keep schools open as long as we can. Why does no one believe we can't keep them open the entire year? It's like we're almost admitting defeat before we've even started. And we need to change our mindset. That's one of our biggest problems, is we've got to change our mindset of how we approach a problem.
Well, but Jeff, a question to that statement you're making. If there's a significant spread within the school at Pretty Prairie, that school's going to have to go to distant learning.
Yes.
So any way that we can keep that spread from happening is helping education as a whole for the near future, is it not? And if by protecting the teachers within your district, by minimizing the spread within your district, are we not helping to keep education open?
We are, but also, I guess, the question becomes, are we ever going to get to a point, or what is the point, where we don't wear masks anymore? Is it when we have no cases in the county? No cases in the county for a month? Where is, as one of the Board members at Pretty Prairie said, you know, in the reopening plan, there's a Tier One, a Tier Two, and a Tier Three. And he asked, where's Tier Zero? Which is, none of this exists. We don't even, we don't seem to have that mindset that we want to get back to what normal was. And that bothers me. I look at what's happened in our county. I grew up in the Abbeville community, I worked with the Abbeville Rodeo, we had the Pretty Prairie Rodeo, we finished the 4H County Fair. All were very successful events. There was a track meet that was held in Pretty Prairie on June 18th for kids from, well, it was South Central Kansas showed up. And, you know, we didn't have a spread from any of those that can be documented. And it's about people going about their life as normal. I'm concerned about the mental health of kids, and, you know, particularly, and I guess one thing I would like to be clarified is, this is talked about K through six. Most, if not all, of our schools have a pre-K three and a pre-K four program. How would that, how would this order affect those two particular programs?
It doesn't. It doesn't.
It doesn't, so...
The Governor's order exempts out children five and under, and only the Governor's order only addresses kindergarten through 12. So your pre-K is not covered by the Governor's order, it's not covered by anything we're doing.
So even pre-K three and pre-K four right now, regardless of what the County Commission does, would not need it in our schools?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I don't know that that's been clearly communicated, but thank you for the clarification.
I sent an email to the Superintendent of Pretty Prairie last afternoon to that effect, that was the question.
Okay.
They are accepted from the Governor's order. Now, if you're pre-K, I suspect, the four-year-olds, well, anybody that age is not covered by any of these orders.
Yeah, we do have it, Pretty Prairie, we have a pre-K three and a pre-K four. We could mandate that.
You could do whatever you wanted, so you can run your own schools, right?
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Addressing the Commission today. Thank you, sir, for being here. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to address this item of business for the, okay? Yes, ma'am? Please come to the, do you want to address the resolution that we're speaking about in regard to masks for K through six, ma'am?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Please come to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments.
My name is Darla Neal. My address is 206 Cochise Trail. I wish I'd read the paper before I did the puzzles this morning, I've been here earlier to hear more of the comments.
You're very timely, Darla.
Okay. I think we're fortunate to be in a country where we can discuss these things and we have choices about these things. But I think sometimes we ignore the facts. Sometimes we interpret the world kind of through our eyes, and we don't pay attention to what we've actually learned. Recently, in the paper, it said that the counties in Kansas who have required masks are lowering or evening out the number of cases rather than having the number of cases grow. So let's use common sense. If those are the facts, let's use those and protect the children in the schools. I've heard people talk about, oh, it would be so inconvenient to do that, to keep little kids with a mask on. I babysat my kindergarten-age grandson this summer a great deal, and when he needed to wear a mask, he had no difficulty whatsoever wearing the mask. We hear that it would be inconvenient for the teachers because they'd have to keep reminding the children to put their masks on, and they would just be tired out by the end of the day. And I used to be a teacher, and I understand tired out by the end of the day. But children are capable of this, and in my view, the lives and the health of these children are far more important than anything else we can consider. I have five grandchildren who will be in school this summer, this year, here in Reno County. The older ones are all being required to wear masks. The little boy who will be in first grade is every much as precious as the other grandchildren, and I do not want to consider that he will not get the same protection that we've been told by all the authorities is very important. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, for being here. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this resolution? Ma'am, if you'd come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. I'm Susan Chaney, I live in South Hutchinson, 12 Enson Drive. I didn't intend to come here and speak of this, but as I was listening, there's something that just overwhelmingly kept coming to my mind. When I wear my mask, can you see if I'm smiling at you or not? Those children in these lower grades, some of them come from horrible situations, they need to see that smile on their teacher's face. They need to see that they are loved. When you have women and men walking around like this, it is a little bit scary. I just, I work at Hutch High. I know this does not affect us because we aren't a part of this consideration, but I work with the kids who are most troubled. I work in the special ed department, but most of the people that I work with are emotion and, for their sake, I won't go on. But I know that if they cannot see me smile, that will affect them, and I am concerned of that. And for these little kids, this is the foundation of their life. You can't just, because some people might have some kind of political reasons to wear these masks when health, when science does not support the fact that these masks really, really, really make a difference. And I just, I know that there was, I don't know if this was mentioned earlier today or not, but CBS this morning had a report on a study that Duke just came out with, and I didn't understand it fully, but they said they did it with a laser. And when you wore a mask, it even put out more particles as you were speaking than when you had no mask, because it split them and they could spread further. So for what that's worth. But I just would encourage you to let the locals, the local school boards make the decision. I would support this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, for being here.
Thank you.
Cassie, we have another gentleman. John, would you please reintroduce yourself, state your name and address, and speak to this subject?
Sure. My name is John Whitesl, 107 East Blanchard Avenue, Lot 102. I am a member of the Haven School Board. I'm here not speaking for the Board, but speaking for myself and for my child. We need to look at the exceptions, I mean, look at the norms, not the exceptions. You know, if I tell you, hey, it's probably not a good idea to drive at night 65 miles an hour down a dirt road, that's probably good advice. But, you know, then somebody's going to come along and say, well, hey, what if there's a fire behind you moving 66 miles an hour? So the truth is, is we have the data on this. There have been many daycares here in the county that have been open for essential workers throughout this entire pandemic. There's also, schools have opened in other countries. And you know what we haven't seen? We haven't seen kids dying. We haven't seen super-spreading events among young children. The data is just not there to support that. And so, you know, a couple of weeks ago when I spoke, Nick was like, oh, gosh, well, you know, I really don't want to recommend masks, but, you know, maybe it's a good idea. And today, he was like, yeah, make them all wear masks and make us in control, and don't give local support to, or local boards any say in it at all. You know, it's, the local boards need to be able to decide this issue, and what's right for them and what's right for the students. I know in my district, we've got a virtual academy. So if parents are afraid to have their kids go to school, then they can enroll in the virtual academy, and we've got a solution for that. But by taking all control away from the Board, you take any flexibility that we have to take care of our own children. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, we're still on this proposed resolution. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to address this resolution before the Commission discusses it? If not...
Commissioner, can I ask Nick a question?
Sure. Well, why don't we, okay, seeing no other people in the audience that want to discuss this, why don't we suggest that public discussion is over with, and now we'll move to Commission discussion of this subject?
That'd be fine.
Okay, and I believe you'd like to ask Nick a question.
Yeah. Nick, I'm not picking on you, okay?
That's right. I've been picked on for six months.
Even though it might appear that way, you bet. We made that, we changed from recommendation to mandate, was that on July 2nd?
Mid-July. It wasn't on the 2nd, but it was...
It wasn't on the 2nd. I didn't think it was on the 2nd, but...
It was.
Was it?
The original order that you signed?
Yes.
July 2.
July 2.
It was July, okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
It was rescinded on July 14.
Okay. And what I'm, we've been a data-driven pretty much throughout this whole COVID deal since March, if we follow data. And I'm looking here at the statistics that Dr. Polly gave us, and that since July 2nd, our percentages have gone up that tested positive. That's after the mask mandate. That's after the mask mandate, okay?
It was July 2 that you removed the mandate, the governor's mandate. She issued the order on the same day, and you adopted an order which-
Followed, which-
No, which said it wasn't mandated.
But when I was talking about the date that it was-
When we reinstated-
When we reinstated, followed her mandate.
That was on the 14th.
14th, okay. We got her straight now.
There you go.
Okay. And so really, we've had one, two, three weeks, and at the third week, we've seen pretty good jump here. And so based on data, based on data to make recommendations, it may be a little week or two too soon to come up with some consistent data. But we've heard people mention data that has shown that it's positive to wear, and I believe that there are reasons to wear masks. I'm not debating that factor. But what I am seeing from the data we have so far, it doesn't follow the fact that we should be decreasing the amount of positive cases just because of mask mandates. Now, I realize it may be a little soon, but we've had dips up and down. But that's just kind of what I was-
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if you want to finish your thought.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. I'm just reviewing this is what I'm doing.
Yeah, absolutely. So with, with the timeline in tow, remember, and I, and I've, I know we've had these conversations for multiple weeks, but especially now, in aggregate and generally speaking, our time to test result back is roughly about seven to 10 days. That's, that's the average between Pretty Prairie, the hospital, and the Hutchinson Clinic, Hutchinson Clinic being the shortest timeline. Dr. Polly talked about a, sounded like, if I remember right, he said somewhere in the realm of 40-hour to 48-hour return, which is two days, which is really good.
Used to be three to five, now it's-
Yeah.
Five to seven.
So, but I would, but I would also illustrate that the time that an individual is exposed and contracts the virus, it takes, and each individual is different, I'm just speaking in generalities, of course. It takes roughly about two weeks for that viral body to replicate to such a point where it begins to present symptoms and those that would showcase symptoms. And in our current methodology for testing, we don't test anybody until they present symptoms. We're not doing asymptomatic testing in the community right now. So you have to present symptoms to go and get tested. So there is potentially a two-week pre-symptom, and then we add another week on to get that test result back, which would suggest that hopefully, any implications that we're seeing for universal mask use would be presenting itself, well, at the tail end of last week, into this week, and then subsequent weeks.
So it showed up, starts showing up, or August 3rd.
Yeah, about, yes.
And then, so that's what I meant, we don't have probably enough data yet to determine the positive attributes-
Sure.
-of mandatory.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that point.
Okay, but it's starting to show, if this would continue as eight-three, then that would give us some information as to the effectiveness of overall mask-wearing, wouldn't it?
I would. Again, it's contingent upon the true EPI investigation per every case that we get through, but generally speaking, yes, from an aggregate level, with the rule of large numbers, yes, my hope would be that we're beginning to see a decreasing trend in totality that we can relate to universal mask use.
I'm trying to get out of, have my personal opinion-
Sure.
I'm trying to follow data.
Sure.
If you follow what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
That's all I have.
Okay, we're at a period that this is a discussion of the commission of this proposed I think if nobody objects, I think at this point in time, states that we can have further commission discussion, I'd like to know if there is a motion and a second to consider this resolution 2020-26. Would that be the correct number? 27, I'm sorry.
27?
Mm-hmm. This 26 was your G?
Is there a motion by anybody to consider motion 2020-27 as presented by the county counselor this morning?
So on the agenda, I would move to approve resolution 2020-27, an order by the Board of County Commissioners relating to public health that includes provisions less stringent than the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 2059 by Joe-
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second the motion, but only for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Now we'll have discussion by the commission in regard to the resolution. Bob, the, well, I'll go first as far as discussion. A week ago, I probably would have voted for this resolution. I have listened to people that have written me. I think teachers are very, very concerned about their safety and they should be. I concur with Ms. Neal that said Kate, children are capable of doing this. I think children can spread this terrible virus, they can take it home to their elders, their grandparents, certainly in the rural areas, that's even more possible maybe because of closeness of families. I've been in touch with school board members feeling that we're putting them in a very divisive situation by not just mandating masks K through six from a county level. And so my opinion of this resolution has changed in the last week. I want to keep schools open. I disagree with the gentleman that says that this won't make a difference in keeping schools open, I think it will. I feel that the commission ought to listen to our county health director, who is stating that he opposes this resolution. For those reasons, I won't be voting for the resolution. Commissioner Bush, do you have any comments at this point in time?
I do, I do. And please let me know if you can't hear me. I know sometimes the communication gets a little, uh, wobbler-jawed, but I got a call last night from a school board member who basically told me that his job was not to make health decisions for his school, it was to be a school board member and see all the other jobs that were there, and that's what the health department was for in Reno County. And he wanted us to make the decision for Reno County, for all the schools, for all the kids. And I thought that made a lot of sense, because when you talk about, when Nick talks about the divisiveness among schools, whether this is political or health-related or something they saw on the internet, you just get to be, you just get a whole lot of different opinions thrown in there, and some of them aren't based on science. You know, when we started this whole thing, I said I was going to try to make my decisions based on science and data. Well, science is still my number one view, coming from our local health department. And Nick, I really want to thank you for writing that letter to us after we had looked at this last week, because I was under the impression that you had reviewed the school plans and that you were basically giving task approval to the non-masking for the younger kids. And I'm glad to see that you cleared that up, that was a misunderstanding I had. But the health department, under the guise of the health board, in conjunction with local medical professionals like Dr. Polly, should be deciding about masks. And today was very clear to me that we need to keep the local control of this particular issue at the Department of Health and within the Reno County government. So I will also not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hirst?
Yeah, I thank you for seconding, so we can have those discussions.
You're welcome.
I have also received phone calls, emails. I want to see, and it appears that this won't pass, but I want to see the teachers conform to this, instead of meeting together and taking some masks off after saying no to the students being allowed to do this, which I know happened. I respect the health department very much, Nick, and I respect his position on this. I just happen to think that we're assuming that we're going to have terrible spread of this virus, without assuming that we may not have. Communication's been excellent, there's been good conversations between health department and our school superintendents. And I just believe that those folks at the local areas can decide what's best for them. They have input from teachers, they have input from parents, they have input from health department. We have given that task by the state legislature to decide who decides the future of our local You know, as a, as a school board member, we do, as a school board member, they do have some influence on health. They can decide what type of helmet can be used or can't use, what type of, the school board would direct the coach if they see something happen that's illegal. They allow drug checks in schools. I think they make that decision, I don't know. They decide upon what, whether they have a school resource officer or not to look after, not only health but safety. Teacher safety, yes, that is a concern of mine. I don't want to take that lightly, but I also understand that that can be worked with, with paras and, and learning. And no, I don't want to see distance learning. CDC has highly recommended schools get started, that has nothing to do with our decision here. But I believe that the local school boards at the local level can decide what's best for their school district. I believe that's good enough.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Bob?
Well, I would just make a quick response that I appreciate what you're saying, there's nobody that supports local control more than probably the three commissioners that we have right here. But this is something different. This is a medical issue, and this is a county-wide medical issue, and I think it's important that we have a level of consistency among all the staff, all the schools, and that we continue to support the health department and the local medical professionals that are advising us that masks do make a difference. Are they the answer? No. Is there going to be an internet study five minutes from now that says masks are terrible? Sure there is. And then there's going to be another internet study 10 minutes from now that says masks are good for you. And I'm really just getting kind of tired of some of that. I think we need to understand that masks have a potential to help stop the spread of COVID, and by making this decision today to not support the resolution, I'm trying to support the teachers for not getting sick. I'm trying to support the school boards for not having to wrestle with a decision that is outside of their bailiwick. Do they make a lot of decisions? Yes. This is one more that they shouldn't have to make, should be made by medical professionals.
I appreciate that, Bob, but we may disagree on that.
Oh, you and I disagree a lot of things, we stick it along, don't we?
You bet. Once in a while.
All right. Oh, come on now.
Okay, is there any further discussion by the commission on this item before we call for the roll call? Okay, I'd like to just make sure that we know exactly how we're voting. A yes here would be voting for the resolution as presented, a no would be voting to not have this resolution. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bush?
No.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
No. Via majority of the commission, we will not be adopting resolution 2020-27 at this point in time. Okay, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, we've been in meetings for-
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes?
I have a new doctor's appointment.
Okay, we'll meet at, we'll recess for five minutes, and I think our final item can be taken up by then. Bob?
When do you have to go, Bob? When do you-
What time do you have to leave?
Here's the deal, I need to be done now.
Okay.
So I'm going to, the only thing that I'm going to miss is going to be the discussion as to the CARES grants.
Correct.
And it's just a discussion item, right? There's no voting, we're not going to make decisions about them?
No, that's not correct. I think that we have to vote on what our preference is for the CARES Act so it can be submitted by the 15th.
Has to be, has to be submitted to state by the 15th.
Nope, nope, nope. I, you're right, it's a business item, not a discussion item, I will hang around.
Well, I appreciate that. We'll reconvene in four minutes. Commissioner Bush? It's on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to our next item of business, which is, oh, my stuff is COVID stuff.
CARES funding first round.
Okay, Gary Megger, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, it's, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you again. As you recall, last week, we met, we talked a little bit about the funding that, requests that have come in or were coming in at that time. Just keep in mind that the requests, we asked the requests to be in by Friday, some of them were still coming in as we were, we were meeting, but we talked about the fact that the requests that, at that time, totaled 13 million, 451,961 dollars. And the, and the funding that's available to the county through the CARES Act is 12 million, 622,000 dollars. So we were approximately 830,000 dollars more than what the, the funds that were available. So staying with the priorities for round one, you asked John Deirdoff and I to get back with the, the agencies, we have eight of the educational institutions- We have eight of the educational institutions and 11 governmental agencies and ask them, go through their applications, ask them to make cuts so we could get down to the $12,600,000. But we spent the week working with the organizations, and we were able to actually reduce the amount of the request to $11,532,000. So we, in working with them, and I appreciate their work on that particular effort, we were able to have, we actually have right now $1,889,000 that could be distributed to other organizations in the county. And as you probably are aware, and we talked about this last week, there are some other organizations that have contacted us, probably have contacted you, asking if there is money available, could that be done? So that would be something for you to consider, what you want to do at this point. Again, I think it was a good process. It gave John and I a better understanding of the money that's being requested and some of the needs of particularly the school districts in their reopening plans and some of the things that they are going to face as they go forward over the next few months.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bush, you probably don't have this data that we have in front of us. What they're suggesting is that they would like us to approve granting to the cities and educational institutions, what, $11,532,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
which would leave unallocated $1,089,498,000. And how are you suggesting that money be used, Gary?
Well, you may recall that last week, we did talk about there has been some requests by private schools and by nonprofits. There has been also some requests by the business community. But I do think that we did really talk about the private schools and nonprofits as maybe being a, maybe the next priority. And then, you know, if there is money left, that could be spread in another way, perhaps to businesses or whatever it might be.
Okay, so are you suggesting approval of the allocations as you have? Plus, you have a sheet here dated August 11th. Is this your suggestion for the remaining money, how it should be allocated?
As far as the remaining $1,890,000, that proposal was put together by John, and I'd like to have him maybe come up and explain the proposal he's put together. We've been working on it together, but he's been the one that
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, John Deardoff. Yeah, what you have in front of you is just really a proposed, what you call a grant program, and it's really focused on the nonprofits. But as Gary mentioned, there was some discussion about the private schools, and so we may want to interject that at some point. But what we did here is just kind of prepare maybe a brief glance of what it might look like, who might be eligible for that. And the use of funds, we prioritized in Priority One as incurred expenses. Anything that these nonprofits have incurred from March 1 until now, related, COVID-related. And then Priority Two was, you know, what they need to do in the future to prepare themselves for COVID-related issues. And then Priority Three, which is, I think is a big issue here with many of our nonprofits, is a revenue loss due to, you know, cancellation of their annual fundraisers, things like that. And, you know, one of the things we need to really kind of talk about today is, is there going to be a cap on this? Because, you know, we've got roughly, I've got information, probably 50 nonprofits in Reno County, some really large ones and some really small ones. And so as we work through this, we really need to talk about whether we do have a cap per organization on the incurred expenses, future expenses, and the revenue loss. And kind of what we're showing there is maybe a cap of $25,000 per organization, and to see where that goes. I know some of the larger nonprofits have some rather large revenue losses, and so therefore I think the cap would be needed to kind of bring things into perspective so that everybody gets some funding. So a couple of other questions on this. You know, we say nonprofit, and you'll see in the blue area there, we've got 501(c)(3). And there are some other nonprofit designations that we may want to consider in this, and I'm not sure of what that looks like. I think there's a 501(c)(6), which would be like the Chamber, organizations like that. So this is really just a kind of a start of what this nonprofit pool of funds would look like. And as we go forward, we would immediately begin putting together some sort of a committee that would review these requests, you know, not a large committee, probably a county commissioner and Randy and maybe somebody else from the nonprofit world to kind of help go through this process. And we really would like to get that started even before we find out what, in September, mid-September, that this pool of funds was actually approved. And so today, I think we're proposing that this program be implemented similar to this with also the caveat that the private schools would be included in this as well. And I'd be happy to address any questions.
Let me ask a question. We have a document that has to be sent back to the state on August 15th. Is the, this $1,89498.54, can that be described the way you're describing it, and that suffices for the August 15th document?
Yes. I will prepare a direct aid program like others have done that specifically talks to this pool of money, one program, this pool of money, and what's to be used for. There may be some administrative costs that we would have to include in that as well as we go forward, but I would prepare that, and we would submit that with all the other direct aid programs in the districts, from the cities and from the county. And so that would suffice to get this. We won't know, you know, until September that these get approved, but probably our thought would be that we proceed with the allocation process, getting the portal set up. We've already got some help with that, I think, through the United Way and the Chamber. So to make this hopefully an easy process for local nonprofits to apply for. And then, as you note down at the bottom, if we get through this process and we haven't allocated all the funds for whatever reason, we'll have the opportunity to amend that direct aid program and target that money maybe to some other resource or more money to some of the nonprofits that maybe didn't get what they wanted in the first round.
Okay, are there questions of John or Gary from the commission?
Yeah, John, this is Bob.
Yes.
I like the cap of $25,000. That's what I would have gone to initially. But could you talk a little bit about why you don't have a higher cap for large nonprofits and a smaller cap for smaller nonprofits? Why do you feel that $25,000 fits all as the best way to go?
You know, it was really just kind of a starting point. I think it's probably something, you know, we have, you know, I personally don't know the size of all the nonprofits. We have some nonprofits probably with one employee and a much smaller budget. We have a nonprofit like the Cosmosphere that's got a big staff and a lot. And so we can, you know, we can probably amend this as we go forward. I think the key is to get the program in place, and we'll always have the option to lower these, maybe the committee would lower these caps in certain cases. But that's something we probably need to drill down a little bit further on. And, you know, I have had some conversations with representatives from the local nonprofit that could help us maybe define that a little bit better. And I don't know if I answered Yeah. Would you like to see a scaled cap based on size of the budget?
No, not necessarily. I'd like for the committee to discuss it, consider it. But I'm fine with $25,000 warrants at, especially like you said, for the purposes of getting this through the door and up to the state. But so you feel confident that once this gets approved, that we'd be able to make internal administrative decisions and changes to the program as long as we stayed within dollar value?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The other thing is, I appreciate your perspective. We talked last week about, I talked to you and Gary, we talked about 501(c)(3). And you're right, there are a lot of other designations out there. And I would open up the door for any tax, IRS designation that your committee would feel appropriate. But I do want it to be an IRS-designated organization that receives these dollars.
Okay, duly noted. Makes sense.
Yes, I think the limit, just 501(c)(3) is when we're looking at nonprofits, is sixes and others that
And, yeah. The one thing we do want to get clarification to today is the private school. I think we've already got applications from them, reimbursements that, I don't know, Gary, you can help me with that number total?
Probably it'd be under $200,000.
Yeah.
Maybe more than like $150,000 right now.
I really think that the private schools should come underneath this first, before the nonprofits, myself.
That was kind of, excuse me, Commissioner, that was kind of our thought too, is the private schools, because they face the same educational challenges right now that the public schools do. So it would seem that with the, particularly the amount of money that they're being, they're requesting, that this would help them with the education of the children. Then you get into the nonprofits. And I think that probably when we apply or put this program together, we could, with regard to the caps, we could leave that out of the, I mean, request the, put the program together requesting the entire million dollars or whatever that number is for the nonprofits and the privates. And then we could, once we see what the requests are from the nonprofits, we could look at what caps are appropriate. It may be a percentage of what's requested, it may be a dollar amount, whatever seems to make sense to the committee.
Hey, I perceive the judgment of this remaining million dollar, $1,890,000 being a harder process than where we are today. So I guess I'd like to take, as far as my recommendation, I'd like to take our document that you're presenting today as a draft. But let us take a week or two to formulate this in a more concrete form. Is that agreeable?
We can, what we can do is we can put together, well, we will have to submit the program description with the application that we do this Friday. But then the details, as you indicate, Commissioner, can be put in there, and we can get that to you as we develop that and have a little more time to understand. Because we do want to meet with some representatives of the nonprofits and make sure we, just like we did with the school district, can really kind of understand their needs and what's maybe makes sense.
I like that idea. You know, the county has made cuts, we made a million-dollar cuts, the cities have made cuts to mitigate the lack, the potential lack of revenue. And so I think that should be considered. The schools cut more than what they requested. And so I'd like to see somewhat effect that the nonprofits can be able to show where they've mitigated some of their expenses, not just feeling they get free money, or like any of us feel like we get free money, that we've made a concerted effort to try to balance our budgets as close as we can prior to the knowledge of this Sparks CARES Act. And so I think that needs to be, I would suggest that that needs to be taken into consideration, that there should be some effort to work best they can financially with that.
Have you two, as our designated committee to put this process together, have you reviewed the items that are in the $11,532,000, and you feel that, from your perspective, that those are appropriate items for us to approve today?
We do believe that, yes.
Okay. Okay. There's some people in the audience might or might not want to speak to this. If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and be as brief as possible.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deborah Tufel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, 117 North Walnut. I would just like to thank all of you and John and Gary for the work that they've put into carefully considering all of the organizations in the community that have had impacts. I think certainly some of the nonprofits didn't have a mechanism through PPP or other means to receive reimbursements. And so I think the creativity of looking at this mirrors some activity we've seen in other counties across the state. So I think it's well thought through and well advised by John and Gary to carve out this roughly million dollars for the private schools and the nonprofits. We, I just want to recommend also, remember the Reno County Economic Recovery Task Force that we formed based on the guidance from Bob Bush and Randy and others. That group has been working since April on economic recovery issues. So if you need to pull a subset of advisors or a group that looks at the allocation of the nonprofit funds, I think that would be a good group to lean on as a subset to help review those applications. And I'd offer that to help guide through the process. So again, thank you for considering the voice of that. I know John met with the Reno County Economic Recovery Task Force as he was, he and Gary were working on this and got some feedback. And so we just appreciate you leaning on them all you can for support.
Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Thanks, Ron.
Appreciate your brevity. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, I'm going to use my prerogative as being chairman to make a motion, and it's got several parts. I would like to make a motion to approve the allocations as presented by our consultants this morning. The city, counties, and school districts' allocation of $11,532,585.46, carving out an amount of $1,89498.54 for private schools and nonprofits. We will, within the next couple of weeks, formulate how a committee should be formed to consider these nonprofit monies and how they should apply and how that should be addressed. I think that's the extent of my motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there discussion, or is there anything that people feel that needs to be added to that motion?
That's the longest motion I've ever heard from Commissioner Sellers. But I'd like to ask Gary and John, is all of that appropriate to put in that? Just curious. Just wanted to make sure, okay?
You know, I was on boards with both John and Gary, and they taught me to make long motions.
Is that right?
You know. Okay. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. I'd like to thank Gary Mager and John Deardoff very, very much. This has been the quickest process I have ever seen done in a governmental entity, demand made by the state on us. The schools worked very, very hard to get you numbers. You've looked at these numbers. I'm very pleased with the consultants that we hired to help the county with this task. We couldn't add a better group.
Thank you. I just want to also say, I really, we really appreciate the help, and we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we have if it wasn't for the help of Randy and Leslie that is doing a lot of stuff behind the scenes too, so thank them.
Yes, certainly Leslie with the county's audit staff has been important to this. So we're not done yet, but we'll decide in a week or two of how we go about the nonprofit process. Okay, thank you. County Administrator reports. Is there anything today, Randy? Randy?
Only item I have is I kind of briefly talked with the commissioners about this. With Nick's last day being Friday, a public health officer is needed. So, I have talked with doctors at Prairie Star, the clinic, Hutch Clinic, and the hospital. They want to continue as being advisory and to help as they can, they see fit, along with sending out information to their fellow doctors to see if there's any other medical professionals that has an interest in being a health officer maybe in the future, if that comes up. But for at least the interim, Karen Hammersmith, one of the interim co-directors, she's on the clinical side, she's a nurse at the Reno County Health Department, is willing to do this on an interim basis. Obviously, not long-term, but whether it's two months, three months, six months. So, I would ask that you consider her for appointment as the interim public health officer following Nick's departure from Reno County until we find someone more full-time or more permanent.
Okay, and you'll work with Karen to arrive at a compensation for this temporary position?
Yes.
Can we get by till Tuesday, okay, without any action needed by the commission on this?
Would, would they need to?
Oh, I think they need to. I'd take action today.
I think today, because the community's going to wonder who's in place. So, I think we need...
Okay, the county administrator is recommending Karen Hammersmith to be the new county health director.
Interim.
Interim health director, using the consultation of doctors from the hospital, the Hutchinson Clinic, and Prairie Star.
And the alternative would be to contract with Nick with his new job and keep him on as the public health officer. He is willing to do that. That's, that is the other alternative.
Okay. I would move to appoint as an interim health officer, Karen Hammersmith, and with whatever...
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Other items, Randy?
Would you mind us reflect that be effective August 15, that appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Other items from your...
No.
Okay, are there items from county commissioners today? Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes, I, with statistics and data shown that I've discussed earlier, I think that's important that we look at that regarding mandatory mask wearing as, as data becomes available, as Nick said, in another week or two. We should have data that shows what the effect of mask wearing is. And so, at that point in time, I think maybe at least I want to bring that up, and hopefully you will agree, that that should be brought up to, to follow up with the data to justify whatever means. I think it, it showed why today with Gary and John being so efficient and their knowledge of the local conditions and so forth, how much that made a difference in how quick and how efficient and, and their conversations with people were. So, thanks to them.
Okay, thank you. I have no items. There's nothing else, and everybody's left the room. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.